Yes.
Oh, great.
Pop chips and with the new flavor in the velveteens.
Yep. Yeah.
Velveteen. You said velveteen. I was like, geez.
It is. Now, this one.
Okay. Good, good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Which is on doing? How you're doing? Nice slides? Do not skip. When I broke my shoulder, I'll show you really quick. When I broke my shoulder, I didn't do my physical therapy. And this is what happens. It's a cold spot on my shoulder, so I can't bring my shoulder back for the map. So don't, do not skip your PT. Yeah, don't forget. Bye, Alma.
Hi. Good to see you. We get you in person. Amazing. Thank you for being here. Does it have like?
We do. Just had an election, that's enough.
It's gonna be me.
Are you leaving?
Yeah. We found you Wednesday.
Oh, I'm.
So.
Yes.
It's this heat wave coming right out.
Well, good. Thank you for being here. See, the thing's.
We know we need to find one. Wow. In front of it.
For us. Thanks. See you.
Okay. Let me go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 5:00 PM or so on June 9th. This is a study session of the Santa Fe Public Schools Board of Education. We will start as ever with the pledge allegiance and salute to the New Mexico flag in English and in Spanish, as well as our acknowledgement of tribal lands. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hola, viva la vida, la libertad, la paz, la justicia, la libertad, la paz, la justicia. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Saludo a la nena, la paz, la justicia, la libertad. It's the symbol of the honest, the better, and the greater community of us. Any acknowledgement of tribal land? We acknowledge that our Board of Education meeting is taking place on the occupied indigenous land. We acknowledge these specific tribal lands and other tribal lands on which we stand. We honor these people, past election completion. We acknowledge the extreme and ongoing colonization where we are sitting right now in New Mexico and in our country. We acknowledge our own place in the story of colonization. Thank you. Now, we move on to approval of the agenda. Superintendent, do we need any changes?
For President, no changes this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move approve. I move approval of the agenda.
How was that? Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez with a motion, Secretary Jose with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We approve the agenda. Moving on to row number two, introduction of interpreter, superintendent.
Thank you, for President, all members of the board. We'll keep an eye out to see if anybody comes in and needs those services.
Thank you. And now to our, we do have, just to orient myself and board members, we do have some items on a consent agenda because we did cancel the meeting last week, so that will come after the meet of our meeting tonight, which is our presentation and discussion on redistricting. So, yeah, and we do also have, in case we want to go ahead and discuss our board committee representatives, as well as our board committee appointments, we'll have those on the agenda for the foreseeable future until we complete that work. But for now, we can move into the presentation, and I want to welcome Brian Sandroff. It looks like it's, you know, oh, you do have another team member. Okay. Excellent. So we'll get introductions, but thank you very much to both of you for making the trip and for being here for helping us with this work.
Thank you very much, school board members. Brian Sandroff from Research and Polling.
Michael Sharp.
From Research and Polling. And Michael's been working hard with your staff already on preliminary technical issues, so things have been going very smoothly so far, and so we appreciate this opportunity to, in this work-study session, to give you a presentation on redistricting and to answer questions that you might have. We even have some initial concepts to go over with you, to get your feedback, so that we can, you know, take it to the next step and see what kind of tweaks you might want. We want to hear from you as to, you know, your overall philosophy on redistricting and what should be looked at as we, you know, craft school board member district. So without further ado, let's go through our presentation. You've got hard copy slides. We're also going to project them on the screen, and so use whichever you want. Later, we're going to go to the screen for GIS, for mapping information, so that you can see things better than you can see on paper. But first, about us at Research and Polling, we've been doing redistricting for quite a while. In fact, we've worked with the schools in '02 and '12, and again, 2022. We've been working in the city of Santa Fe even before that. Scary to think about as the years pass by. And as you see there, myself, Brian, and Michael Sharp, and Brittany Pos has also been working hard on this project thus far up to this point. So what is redistricting? Because we know oftentimes there's confusion that occurs among the general public when they hear about redistricting. They might somehow equate it with attendance boundaries, and will redistricting shift where the students in Santa Fe Public Schools attend their schools? And so we wanted to reiterate what redistricting is and what it is not. Redistricting is the adjustment of the school board election district boundaries to account for population shifts. Over the course of the decade, a district will shift in population, and oftentimes some of the population shifts are in certain parts of the district. And so the objective of redistricting is to adjust the boundaries at a minimum to account for that shift, and then it's also an opportunity to come up with new ideas on how districts could be configured if you wanted to. So, and the way, also, redistricting is the way in which we change districts to determine who represents us. So the adjustment of school board election district boundaries does not affect the location of the schools in which the students attend. So parents who are listening in, streaming, wondering how their kids are going to be affected by the redistricting process. Now, it will affect how, what people you represent in your districts, but it won't affect the attendance boundaries per se. It is required after each presidential census, federal and state law. We wait until after we get the census data, the 2020 data, and we do it after that. Why? Because that's when the data are most fresh, even though we have lots of concerns about a possible undercount, we still want to use the most fresh information that we have. It was last done in 2012. It's still in effect. It will remain in effect until the elections in 2023. So you'll be, state law says you've got to do it this year. You've got to get it done this year. Your staff say you want to get it done through the summer, but it won't take effect till the next election. Basically, there are five principles of redistricting, and here they are. Equal population, minority voting rights, contiguity, compactness, and communities of interest. These are the kind of factors that we want to think about in the course of us doing the work. When it comes to equal, and we'll touch on all of these a little more, but when it comes to equal population, the goal is that each school board member represents approximately the same number of people. If a district has too many people, a lot more people, then it's being underrepresented because more people are represented by one school board member, and the same thing in reverse. And so we want to equalize the population. Equal population equals equal fair representation. Minority voting rights, there are certain racial and ethnic groups that are protected by the Voting Rights Act, federal law, and so we're careful in drawing the districts not to violate anything. We're very familiar with all those rules, and we'll guide you on it. Contiguity, can't have party district over here and an island, and another party district over here. Got to be able to take a pencil out of that and connect the dots, or you're able to block your district without leaving it. So no two islands within your district. There's got to be contiguous. Compactness, compactness deals more with the shape of the district, not the size, because the southern district in your school district is going to be bigger because of lower population density. It's the shape that matters. Now, when it comes to shapes and compactness, you know it when you see it, right? If you see a bunch of snake-like looking districts, you know that's not the best. Communities of interest, well, districts should be grouped with people who have shared values, or shared interests, or lived experiences, so that the voters in that district have an opportunity to elect a candidate who understands their needs. But it's up to you to decide what the communities of interest are. Every, and the tricky thing about communities of interest is that different people have different perspectives on what they should be, what are the priorities. Some people might want to look at one neighborhood and say, oh, it belongs here. Another person say, oh, it belongs here. Oh, keep my neighborhood together. Someone might say, oh, split my neighborhood in two. That way we'll have two school board members, and we'll have more voice. And so you get to hear conflicting information sometimes on what the communities, and it's hard, but it's up to you to make that tough determination. Okay. We talked about equal population. How do we define that? Well, your district, according to the census, has a population of 128,098 people. What's the ideal population of a district? Simple math. You take the population of the district, you divide it by five, five districts. That's the ideal population of a school district, 25,619, ideal population of a district. Now, you are allowed some deviation from the ideal population of the district, and the districts have to be substantially equal, not perfectly equal, in population. And if you look at the middle part there, state law guides us here. State law tells us that, well, take the ideal population of the district, and the district population shall be no more than plus or minus 5% from the ideal population of the district. So that's what we go off of, the state law, on defining substantially equal population. So you can see there what that range is. The 24,300 to the 26,900 is the range from which we stay within the law. Minority voting strength, dilution of minority voting strength. Do not dilute the strength of ethnic or language groups. Native Americans, African Americans, Hispanics, and Asians are protected under the Federal Voting Rights Act, and it speaks to giving the minority population an opportunity to elect a candidate of choice. You know, frankly, in places like Pops, New Mexico, and Carlsbad in Mexico, there's been past evidence of white bloc voting, and it's very important to create majority Hispanic districts so that they have an opportunity, like candidates of choice. Santa Fe is blessed by not having white bloc voting and a long history of electing people of different groups, but still, we have to be careful that in certain parts of town where there's an opportunity to create a majority Hispanic district, we want to be sensitive to those matters, and we have been in the plans that we do. On the one hand, don't dilute the voting strength of ethnic or language, racial groups, but on the other hand, don't racially gerrymander. Don't build a district that's so funny-looking just to protect a particular class. Here you see a classic, you're looking at a congressional district here from North Carolina, the 12th district, the size of it famous over the years, and you can see it. What they did there was they packed all the African Americans into one district that was bordering up interstate, so that it would be so packed that then all the neighboring districts would be white, and, you know, that's what we're looking not to do. Packing and cracking are the two ways of gerrymandering racially. If you pack every, a group, racial group into one district, or if you crack it, you take Tierra Contenta and you divide it into three different school board districts, that would be cracking an area. Contiguity, we talked about. The non-contiguous, District A is not contiguous on the left, on the right, it is on the left. Compactness, we spoke of. There are lots of different fancy mathematical measures to measure compactness. None of them are perfect, but you basically know it when you see it. There, you're looking at the northern congressional district for CD III back in 1991. You know, there's Santa, the northern CD. You see, it's not different from what it was until recently. It's compact. It might be large, but that's because it took that much geography to get one-third of the state of New Mexico, including Santa Fe in there. And then you see a Texas 18th district and its congressional district. Okay. We talked about communities of interest, and they could be lots of things. They could be taking into account a group or an area with shared characteristics. Neighborhoods, cultural, language, historical, tradition, resistance, even location of schools. You tell us what the communities of interest are and/or react to ours. Maintaining the core of existing districts can be considered a community of interest. Maintaining the core of existing districts minimizes voter confusion. You're already building blocks of redistricting. They're also the building blocks of running elections. And so we try to minimize precincts, but Santa Fe is blessed with lots of precincts now, so we have lots of building blocks. Taking into account the incumbent's residential location can be considered a community of interest. Now, you don't want to do it in order to protect an incumbent, to make the funniest district-looking district you've ever seen, but if you can draw very rational districts, maintain incumbents in their location, that's perfectly fine. Okay. One thing we want to make clear, because there was some confusion with the public, and that is that there is no legal requirement for school board district boundaries to match up with school attendance boundaries, or for board members to only be assigned to schools within their board district boundaries. Under current board district plan, parents of children in schools assigned to board members may or may not live within a board member's district. So you might have certain schools that you focus on that are in your district, they're out of your district. We'd probably like to hear a little more about that, how that works. We've got different plans for you to consider, plans that just make minimal changes, plans that straighten out the boundaries a little, and plans that even take into account some of the schools that have been assigned to you, and so we want to talk about those things. Okay. We have just some stats here to show you population change from 2010 to 2020. So in 2010, you can see the population of the district of 118,000. 2020, 128,000. Change of about 10,000 people, 8.4% of population change. You know, this last decade was the slowest growth in New Mexico in the history of the state. The whole state only grew by 2.8 percentage points. So your county grew, your school district grew by a higher rate than the state did, but still, there were other decades where your school district grew at a much faster clip, and that your districts required more dramatic changes to the boundaries than this last district, not last decade. Okay. So remember, we talked about population deviations, and that to stay legal, you have to stay within a plus or minus 5% population deviation from the ideal. Here, what you're looking at are your five school board districts under current school district boundaries, applying 2020 census, and how far you are from the deviation from the ideal. So if we look at this, we see that District 1 is 3 tenths of, 3% below the ideal population district, so it falls within the range. District 2, 4.2%, District 3, 9.7% above, so District 2 was minus 4. District 4 is really almost right on at the 0.5 negative, and then District 5 at minus 2% from the ideal. So it shows you that not only have you had not that much growth in the last decade, but the distribution of that growth hasn't been all that dramatic. There were some decades where this looked very different, especially on the southwest part of town, and that area had a shrink dramatically, the south-southern part of town, and the others had to pick up a lot more. So if you were to go with a minimal change plan, and we had one, one of our concepts is minimal change, we'd always do one minimal change plan, at least, you know, one minimal change plan would not change your boundaries by much. Any questions up to this point on that information? In terms of racial information, ethnic information, here we're switching over. Remember, we were just talking about total population and the deviation from the ideal, but when one speaks about by Rights Act or race, ethnic data of the like, one switches over to the adult population, because we're talking about voting age. And so here you're looking at the adult population percentages in the school district. 43% Hispanic, 49.9 white, non-Spanish white, we call it, Asian 1.7, Native American 1.4, black 1% approximately, and other 3.2%.
What's other?
Other are many different groups. Well, it also includes a multiracial in this category, Michael?
Right. Oops. Sorry for that. I didn't get quite so close. You know, include the Hawaiian and Pacific Islander, similar race category, as well as people who selected more than one race on the census form.
Right. Okay. And so now, if you looked at the school population, you'd probably see the percent Hispanic much higher, because, and if you looked at the total population of Santa Fe, that 43% probably grows by 3 percentage points. But when you look at the adult population, these are the numbers. Okay. Okay. Oh, let's, let's look at the, the second overlay. Here is a screen. It's hard to read, which is why I was hesitant to show. It color codes percent adult Hispanic population at the precinct level within Santa Fe. Some of those precincts that go out to the county line, you know, have their populations actually closer to the city, so it gets a little confusing. But if we, Michael will mouse over it when I'm speaking to a certain place. So the deepest purple, is it, of colored light, is the highest proportion Hispanic, and then as the shades get lighter, the proportions go down. So one point we want to make, if you look at by District 4, by, let's say, Tierra Contenta, you see a substantial, a large Hispanic population. Then the areas both north and south of Tierra Contenta, both by Airport Road and south of Tierra Contenta, have even a higher proportion of Hispanics in it. Then if you, that area just north of Airport Road, you know, by Lopez and going up Cereza Road there, you just see higher concentrations of Hispanics. More in the central part of the city where the District 5 is, you see still a high proportion of Hispanics, but nearly as much, not nearly as much. When you look at east of St. Francis, when you look at east of St. Francis, there's not a single precinct where the majority of the adults are Hispanic. Okay? So there are racial divides in Santa Fe. Now, there still is a substantial percentage of Hispanics east of St. Francis, but it's more like in the 20s, 25%, whereas you get into 70% by Airport Road, 80% south of Tierra Contenta areas, by Rafina and the like. So when one's drawing districts, and one tries to make sure we create two Hispanic, majority adult Hispanic districts, you can see where those are going to end up, and so we wanted to point that out. Okay. Now, we know that you know your current districts. You may not be as familiar with the other school board members' district, and the public is listening too, but very, very briefly, let's just remind ourselves of the current districts, because we'll be comparing that to concepts. So basically, District 1, and this is on a district-wide map, so it's hard to see. We'll zoom in in a minute. But District 1, as you know, is east and southeast sides of Santa Fe, out to the county line, includes a few neighborhoods west of St. Francis and south of the capital as well. And that pretty much defines, you know, Santa Fe school district, you know, sometimes districts don't divide well into certain numbers. You know, Santa Fe, in a way, does okay, divides into five. You've got this southeast, east side district. You've got a northern district that runs north of Alameda and Hyde Park Road and takes it up to, through Tuzqueh, you know, in the northern district. You have a southern District 2, which is basically the community south and east of the city of Santa Fe and the county line. Orietta, Madrid, El Dorado, Galveste, Ollami falls within the district. As we talked about, District 3, we're in the part of the school district where we're by Alameda and the river. District 4 is mostly southwest Santa Fe, mostly south of Airport Road, although it does cross over and includes some other areas, but basically, Tierra Contenta, Los Yenegas, the airport itself crosses over Cereza Road, South the road up to Richards Avenue. And District 5 is a central Santa Fe, if you will, a district in southern Santa Fe. The northern border is the Santa Fe River from Lopez to Baca, the western border to Richards Avenue and Lopez, and eastern border sort of meanders between St. Francis and the railroad tracks, and St. Michael's to Cereza to Baca. But basically, you've got five districts, one representing the southern part of the school district, one from Alameda up the north, one southeast, one south-central, and one southwest. When I think of Santa Fe, you know, would it have been easier to have the opportunity to have deviations of plus or minus 10% to really refine these regions? Yeah, that would have been nice, but we have these constraints upon us to equalize the population. So you might see some neighborhoods that might be better off in a different district, but we still have to work within those constraints. So here's the racial information. This is current districts using 2020 census. So first, one time at least to show you how to read this table, since there's a lot of numbers on it. Let's look at District 1. We see it has a population, total population of 24,800. Below that, in the next row, is the adult population in District 1, the 21,000. Then you can see the population deviation, that 3% that you saw earlier, negative 3%. That's from the ideal populace. Then you can see the percent total population Hispanic and the percent adult Hispanic. So District 1, current district boundaries, 2020 census is 28.8% Hispanic. District 2 is 32% adult Hispanic. District 3 is 40% adult Hispanic. District 4 is 66.9%, and District 5 is 49.9. Now, what happened was, 10 years ago, when we drew these districts, District 5 was a majority adult Hispanic district, but in the census, either due to demographic changes or census undercount, it fell below 50. In our plans, a couple of the concepts of A and B, we bring that. we bring that percent back over 50%. It used to be, it slipped under, we bring it back. And so just, you can also see the percent non-Spanish white, percent Native American. Notice, within the school district, if you look at the bottom totals for Native American, you can see 1.4% of total population Native American, 1.4% adult Native American. We talked about these numbers before. You can see African Americans, about 1%, Asians, about 1.6%. Okay. So staff wanted us to show you the current district boundaries and the schools outside of a members' district under current districts. So we've noticed on your website, you have certain schools that you focus on. You might, of course, help all the schools and all the people with the middle street, but there are some schools that you concentrate on or that maybe us, the members of the public, might go to the website and see that you focus on a particular school. They might not be experts on the district boundaries. They might call you up. So we wanted to at least look at the schools that are outside of members' current district, under current districts. And here, I'm not going to read them all. You can see what they are. They happen to fall beyond the boundaries of... Now, this is where the school is located. It wouldn't necessarily be the attendance boundaries. You might find that some of the attendance boundaries do fall within your district, or you might find they even fall further outside your district. But this is the school physical location.
I have a question. How did these things get out of district? Does anybody know who's been here, Kate maybe, who's been here longer?
Not really. I can tell you that... When I began on the board, the old La De Goytay School was known as, I mean, Kristy, my mother's better than anybody else, was known as the Academy of La De Goytay, which of course became Desert Sage. And that was something that was part of District 3, and now it's Mandela. So, you know, both of those are, Mandela's a lottery school and Desert Sage is, what would we call it, an opt-in school? So, you know, those are, I think, some of our principles, which were sort of based on geography and school district boundaries, have changed. And the way things are operating practically in the past 10 years has evolved. But Kristy, hang on, what's happened? You gotta share it with Brian, sorry.
Board President, Noble Board Members. You know, to my recollection, there were some board member preferences over the years. There were public discussions in the boardroom about high schools being large enough to warrant more than one person, you know, being attached to it. And there were some personal preferences about schools, affinities to schools for certain reasons, attachments. And then, as Ms. Noble stated, there have been changes or new constitutions of some physical buildings, movement of some programs, and significant construction projects that even moved schools. You know, El Camino used to be in a different location. So I think that a lot of it was just dialogue in the boardroom that came from preferences of past board members.
And one thing I'd say, just in thinking about this, because frankly, it's been a little bit of an irritation for me since I got on the board. But this is an opportunity for us to clean things up. It may get messy by 10 years from now again, but hopefully, we can get some good clarity with the guidance here and really understand who represents what school at the end of all this. Thank you.
Right, and we see that this is an important issue to give guidance on. Should, how important is this to you? Do we want to link up to the best possible? Now, some schools that fall so far beyond your district boundaries that makes the district not come back to be successful. So one of the things that we want guidance on is, how important is it for the school district boundaries to reflect schools that you might be specializing or assigned to as compared to drawing the boundaries based on what you think which neighborhoods happen to be the most sensitive district? That's a good thing for you to, you know, think about on your own. But here on the map, the red represents the schools that don't fall within the district of the assigned school board member, and the blues represent the ones that do. Is that right, Michael? So, okay. So now, I guess, we're going to move toward showing a couple of concepts, right, Michael? And you have those in your paper charts, but Michael will set it up on the GIS, so it's easier to see the boundaries. So, Concept A, we're calling it a concept. The reason we're calling it a concept is because we just want to give you an idea. And you might say, I've got some ideas. You can tweak that this way or that way. But it's a concept. And this concept was, the foundation of it was minimal change, equalize the population, maintain two Hispanic majority districts, do not pair incumbents, because it was minimal change. And part of our definition of minimal change is not very helpful. You remember the map where you looked at the ideal populations? And you saw that one District 3 was too big, and the other ones would then have to pick up a little population to equalize them. So that's what this plan does. So if we zoom in a little more and we look at precincts, Michael, 24 and 159, south of West Alameda by the Barrio La Canyada neighborhood, two precincts shift from District 3 to District 5. Okay? So two districts, south of West Alameda, shift from District 3 to District 5 to equalize the population.
And Brian, if I could just, clarification on the map. There's a kind of dashed darker green-white kind of dashed line. Yeah, I think it wants to show up here. So that represents your current board member districts. So you can see that these two precincts that Brian mentioned were the ones that moved from District 3 to District 5.
And look at the deviations of District 3 in that label. Notice now, it's at plus 3.6. Was that, you know, 9 before? And then look at District 5. And District 1, there's some other minor changes, but we got it within the plus or minus 5. But that's not the only change. Also, the boundaries between District 1 and 5 moves from St. Francis Drive to Yucca and Second Street. Okay? So the boundary between Districts 1 and 5 moves from St. Francis to Yucca Street and Second Street. Basically, the area between Yucca and St. Francis moves to District 1, and the area between Second and St. Michael's moves to District 5. Now, that was done also to maintain two majority Hispanic districts. They had to be one, we couldn't even clean up that line more, but the percent Hispanic drops a little bit on the districts, so we made the changes necessary to comply. And then the third change within this minimal change plan is on the boundary between Districts 3 and District 4. Both sides of Awafria are consolidated in District 4 to follow the new precinct boundaries. Okay, the Santa Fe County Clerk and the County Commission changed the precinct boundaries. And so in this case, by unifying that neighborhood on both sides of Awafria, we conform to the new precinct boundary. And it also, you know, unifies neighborhoods. We couldn't unify them last time because there was a precinct split. Now, the County Clerk sort of fixed that, County Commission. And so we shifted that and so that they're consolidated into District 4 to conform to the precinct. Those three changes represent what we call a minimal change plan, that the other districts remain the same. We adjust them simply to account the population and keep the two majority Hispanic districts and to fix the precinct boundary. Sure.
That, is it possible to zoom in on that spot?
Hey, Sasha, for the multitudes.
Thank you, sorry. Appreciate it, sorry. Yeah, exactly, thank you. If it's possible to zoom in on that space between St. Mike's and Second Street, is that, is that a Cuadocuell neighborhood? Is that what that is? I'm trying to think of what that, yeah, okay. I wonder what school this holds to. So, of course, that's interesting. It is Cuadocuell, so there's Salazar. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, cool, that's interesting.
What's your reaction to it?
I think it makes a lot of sense, like with the demographics of my district. I mean, that spot, I think, fits in more with that, with that area than on the other side. I think it, I mean, my gut feeling is that it makes a lot of sense, especially if the kids are going to Salazar, which is a school that's in my district now. Though it'll be interesting to see with the others, because I think there's some movement north and south of Cerrios, right, on some of these maps in District 5?
Right.
Which would mean Salazar is then not in my district anymore. So I'm, sorry, I'm trying to think through. This is very complicated and very interesting. I'm trying to keep it all in my head.
Absolutely, it absolutely does. And so, yeah. And again, the three concepts, yeah, you will see change. And that's why you like to know what you like and what you don't like. Okay, Concept B, really, it's different, but not that much so in the sense that what we wanted to do was to keep more neighborhoods in the city together, hold the boundaries more to major thoroughfares and features where we could. And so that, so, concept, the current was still the base, but that was the objective. So for example, in Concept B, the neighborhoods on both sides of Airport Road are unified and placed in District 4. So, you know, District 3, you know, is a pretty vast district. And it goes from the northern regions down to Airport Road. And so we thought that what if the neighborhoods on both sides of Airport Road, north and south of Airport Road, were unified into that southwest school district? We noticed in the newspaper, there's been a lot of activity of people in the Airport Road area, both sides of the road, trying to unify and create branding and create an economic vitality. And so the question is, would both sides of Airport Road be better off in a district with Tierra Contenta, let's say? Or is it better to remain in District 3? So that's an example of, in Concept B, of taking neighborhoods of both sides. And thus, more of District 3 then is bounded by the Santa Fe River rather than shifting downward. And so that's one example of the change in Concepts B. Also, between Districts 1 and 3, both sides of Hyde Park Road would go into District 3 rather than splitting it between Districts 1 and 3. So District 3 would have, again, both sides of that area, the neighborhoods of Hyde Park Road rather than dividing it on Hyde Park Road itself. And also, the boundary between Districts 1 and 5 would be a combination of Yucca, Yano Street, St. Michael's, and the Sage. So the boundary would change to make this all work. But basically, the boundary between 1 and 5 is more of Yucca. Yano and Michael's highlight that. I have a challenge, it's always just a color difference. And you can, so that is a different boundary between 1 and 5. You can see the difference, okay? And it is possible occasionally to swap out precincts on a common boundary. But part of this, again, is to maintain the two Hispanic districts and how things shake out in that District 5. District 5, the southern boundary in District 5 extends further down Cerrios. So District 5, rather than ending at St. Richard's Avenue, that I-25 extends down Geller Miles Road to Cerrios. District 5 picks up that area there, all right? And that's, there it is, right there. That area there is in 5 rather than 4. And then, did I miss anything important?
No, and then just the other part, in District 5, north of Airport, where it does extend further west of Lopez. And kind of the north side of Rafina, between Rafina and the river. So that does go to District 5. So I think basically what happens is this, in general, big picture, is that if District 3 loses this area between Airport and the Santa Fe River, it loses so much population, it has to pick it up from somewhere else. And it just creates this almost clockwise shift of districts. So District 4 took this from 3, 3 took from 1, 1 lost population, now it's too small. Now one has to add population. It goes clockwise into District 5. District 5 is too small, now it has to pick up from 4. So it's this kind of clockwise rotation. So you can make one change, and it can affect every other district.
And hopefully, it's affecting them in a positive way or a neutral way. But if one of the objectives was, you know, that work there by Airport Road, then you have to look at how a ripple effect will affect others. And then that's where always the cost benefit comes in. Sometimes you really like something, but you don't like something else that will last. And maybe there's a way to fix it to the part you don't like, et cetera, et cetera.
What's the deviation on 2? Here, can't quite see it. 4%? And that says 0.14, correct?
Correct, negative.
Negative 4.24. And so this would be Concept B. So A was minimal change. B was try to unify some neighborhoods and deal with the ripple effects that occurred as a result of it. Concept C, well, we did see your website. We did see you had schools assigned to you. And so one of the things we tried to do was a concept that would align board members' districts with the schools that they represent. We weren't able to successfully do that for all of them, but that was an objective there, to try and get the schools that you focus on a little more into the districts. Now, just because we got the school into the district, doesn't mean we got the attendance boundaries in it, right? And we haven't looked at those or seen those. And you'd have to provide guidance if you like this plan or hate this plan or whatever. But, so District 1, under this plan, basically is most of central Santa Fe and the east side. Neighborhoods on both sides of Hyde Park Road and Bishop's Lodge are in this District 1. And by doing this, we're able to get more of the schools that were assigned to District 1 into it. And so, Michael, what are we seeing here in terms of the schools there?
So just in terms, I put the school locations on there on the map. And I have a feeling that the area on both sides of Bishop's Lodge is just the way to make the population work.
Right.
Since there aren't any schools in that particular part of town or in those precincts.
So you can see if it's, and here, we're also looking at the blue and the red?
Just the blue.
Just the blue. So these are the schools that fall within. Are you, you basically just put the school locations on the map?
Right, right.
And so then you can see how it shakes out. Yeah. And then, so, one big difference in accomplishing this objective is on District Two, it does cross over, uh, I-25 between St. Francis and El Pecas Trail, um, picks up a neighborhood there.
I think that one picks up Desert Sage.
Oh, I was gonna move. And, and the northern border is Rayo de las Chemisos there. District Three, um, I guess loses neighborhoods on both sides of Bishop's Lodge Road, um, and, this is to make the population work, and also adds neighborhoods, um, west of Alameda, south of, south of West Alameda, between Camino Ollaria and St. Francis. So, south of West Alameda Street, between Camino Ollaria and St. Francis, is an, that's added to District Three, as well as between Awafria and the Santa Fe River, from Siler to Bacca. That gets added in to District Three to make this concept work of putting more of the schools into the assigned districts. District Four.
Oh, you're right, sorry, one more. And one more changes to get, went down into District Three. So, we went down between Awafria and Essequia, and put that into Three.
I just had a quick comment, and I'm talking about your district, so it's on the side of the line, but that, um, scooping that Aspen part up makes a lot of sense to me, like in terms of the, those neighborhoods, that sort of like works well with Barilla Canada, and, I mean, it, it sort of makes, and it's right there by Aspen, because right now, you have Aspen, but you represent a lot of the people who are zoned for Aspen. I just remember that from, I worked on friends, Ken. So, I remember that from cutting your, cutting your list, but that, that part is really interesting to me, because that was one thing when we were doing, that popped out. Sorry, just in the past, sorry.
Okay, good feedback. District Four, uh, basically, you know, Tera Contenta, north of Airport Road, in this plan, from Hemis to Siler. And now, District Four, under this scenario, would not cross Cerezo's Road. So, it becomes a little tighter.
And, and the reason why it does go up between Rafina and the river is just to pick up the nine, really, each other's, so that's why it does go all the way up there, to include it in Four.
So, that's an example of how important is it to get these assigned schools into a district? If it is, then a district boundary might, uh, extend a little further north than it would have otherwise, and, uh, if that's most important to you, then so be it, and there's an example of how it works. District Five, the southern border is I-25 extended to Cerezo's. Um, the northern border is Rafina and Awafria Street, and the eastern border is roughly St. Francis Drive and Second Street. And, um, so, under this scenario, the objective was to get more of the schools into the districts, and it creates those changes necessary to accomplish it. So, those are the three basic concepts. Um, and... Any questions, or, it's a lot to absorb all at once. And within your, uh, slideshows, you've got which schools are within each of the concepts. We didn't go through that right now, but you've got it all within your presentation. Um, so, um, if there are no more questions or comments, um, the next slide would be, of course, typically, what a, a school board does, is at a regular board meeting or other sessions, present the plans, get any public feedback, continue to get commission feedback, um, school board member feedback. And, um, if somebody says, you know, "I really like this concept, and I think it needs a little tweaking, or I've got a whole, an idea for a whole new concept," then we would do that, uh, based on the feedback we got at that meeting, and then the next meeting would come back and show. And, um, go through that process. So, you, we get to a point where you feel comfortable with the plan, and then you would ultimately adopt it. Um, the plan, I think, is to adopt a plan in the summer, or in August or September, um, and, um, um, public feedback, board feedback, tweaking plans, coming back with new plans, adjustments, if necessary. You might take one of these plans and say, "Wow, I'm really sold out of the way it is." Um, and, and that's the kind of feedback we need to get back from you.
Madam Chair, how, how do we get the public feedback? Are we gonna have forums, or what are we gonna do about that?
I think there's a plan.
One, one approach would be to put the maps on the website. That way, everyone could have access to them, and the statistics that go with them. Typically, there is, um, at a minimum, at regularly scheduled board meetings with proper notice and advertising, letting people know you'll be presenting the plans at a board meeting, um, and getting feedback that way, um, that those two things work. Key is getting the word out, so people could know. I mean, there's still some governmental agencies that are working on Zoom. Uh, you're having live meetings, which is, uh, Zoom is, is clever, because people from all over could, you know, come in at once, but not everyone has that kind of access. But, typically, it's during, um, regular, uh, board meetings. I mean, you could go out to certain districts and do it. Usually, that doesn't draw big crowds, it's been our experience, once they find out, it doesn't affect the attendance charges.
And I think to add, maybe having a virtual community town hall. So, you combine to a virtual board meeting, to a community town hall, and you could probably have a lot of input through, uh, that way. We can always have set that up.
Any thoughts on those ideas? Strong feelings about what we should do? Can we get interactive maps? These, the, the printed maps are pretty hard to read. I mean, could we, on the website, have the tool, um, so that there's zooming and...
That's a cheaper keyer thing to do.
Is it?
Yeah, we could produce, we can produce, um, a different set of maps, so we can produce some, we call it plots or large format maps, where you can zoom in on a PDF, it might be easier to see some of the streets and pick that up, so we can start with that, and, and then go from there. But to pre, put this up onto the website interactively is a little bit tougher to do.
Perfect.
Sorry.
And then, maybe if we did that, I think the PDF map was probably a decent workaround, and maybe with notes or, you know, indications on what's changed in that concept, um, because it's hard to track all the little pieces.
It was nice to see the pieces of Ciprefornian and the other ones, which will not, I guess...
Yeah, exactly, that's true.
And here you talk, say them out loud, like, this is moving here, and this is moving there. I could actually see it moving.
In all of them, are precincts preserved?
Yes.
So, there's no option that splits precincts?
Well, let me restate that. There are many county, uh, precinct is a function of the county.
Uh-huh.
And there are precincts where the school district boundaries go, uh, split precincts.
I see.
But within the district itself, there are no split precincts. Only when a precinct goes beyond the school district boundary, then we only take the part of the precinct, we split up the precincts to conform to your school district boundaries. So, when you see a, a precinct population, it might not be the whole precinct, it's, it's just a part that's within your school district.
But we're not splitting them between Districts One, Two, Three, Four, or Five?
No, we, we didn't have any need to do that.
Okay.
Uh, the law allows it if we have to, uh, and to, to preserve communities of interest or to comply with federal law, but at this time, Santa Fe added a lot of precincts, thanks to Michael working with the County Commission. Um, the state law requires precincts to be split if they get too big. And so, Santa Fe County, uh, split a lot of precincts, gave us more building blocks to work with. And you saw that example in Concept A, where we brought, uh, that neighborhood up to Awafria to conform to the new precinct boundary.
What advice, having seen this a few times, what advice would you have for us in going forward to basically objectively do this well? I mean, I know you gave the principles at the, at the start there.
Well, I mean, I think you should reflect on the concepts and say to yourself, "How satisfied are we with our current district plans? Are they working for the community? If so, maybe lean toward a minimal change plan." Are some of our boundaries a little confusing, are a few of our neighborhoods divided? Should we do that deal on Airport Road, and what about by, um, High Park Road, and would those people appreciate being together or not? That's Concept B. Or we really want to focus on, um, getting all the schools that are assigned to us into our district, so that there'll be accountability come Election Day, and the people who are voting for us are also the people who have been coming to us for their issues on the schools. That's Concept C. So, the first thing, I guess, I'd say to you in terms of advice, is big picture. Are you pretty much happy with what you want, and make the adjustments that are necessary? Do that, only straighten out some of the neighborhoods, and B, or really focus on putting the schools that are in your districts, sticking to those. Now, school, schools within districts are for, school board members come and go, right? Schools within a district, i- i- if those, this, schools are assigned to you for the right reasons, because you're really focused and interested in them, then that's perfectly fine. What happens when the next school board member comes in? Do you feel committed to that district always representing those same schools? Or are those schools, it sounds like from what I'm hearing tonight, they're not based on your particular preferences, because they've been around longer than you. So, how do you feel about that notion of school board members' districts being aligned to particular schools, even if some of those schools start going a little beyond the, the, the core of the district? So, that's how I would start. What, I won't say it again, that's how I would start, with the big picture. And then, we can always tweak the plans. Michael, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you pretty much covered it.
That's very helpful, thank you. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Noble. This is an agenda item, uh, even next week. Cody has some ideas of how to help, um, really engage the communities on our website, so we can always participate in that discussion with some ideas that, uh, he can come forward with.
Yeah, putting it on the website's great, because then everyone who, who hears about it can go there, little hassle, and, and get a hand on things. And that way, when they come to a meeting, and that's what happens, the people who typically come to the meetings have already been to the website, and so, they have, they know what they want to say before they get here.
Madam President, go ahead.
Thank you, I think, you know, I think that's kind of the big picture thing is what I'm struggling with, is like, that there's no legal requirement for the district boundaries to match up with our schools that we represent, and being the representative from District Two, like, it's always just been super weird to only have two schools. Like, I, I understand that that is, the population is equivalent, but as far as the actual people participating in our schools, it's a significantly lower population, and so, that's just always felt weird to me, and I was curious how this would shake out in line with that, um, which I guess is to say that I would be happy to represent more schools, but I don't know that that needs to be reflected in the boundary changes either. So, that's all.
Board Member Anderson?
It seems like Desert Sage should be your school, I mean...
I'm guessing that the school district maps don't go by precinct at all, right? Those are, I'm, I ask that because, not the board districts, but the, where folks are districted, yeah, the school boundaries, thank you. Um, I'm wondering how those sort of match up with the maps, like, for example, like, we were talking about the folks that are, um, zoned for Aspen, but in your district, or like Chaparral being in my district, but mostly about where the parents are, um, and, and getting a little confusion between, well, I know my child is zoned for this school, but when I go to vote for this person, this is not the person who represents, which I think is a little bit of what Concept C does, but it, it puts the physical building within the zone, but not necessarily the school boundaries, right? Um, that sounds very complicated to me, to try to reconcile those two things. I just wanted to say it out loud, because it's been going around in my head.
And just to clarify, oh, I'm sorry.
Right, if the attend, are oftentimes the attendance boundaries not compact?
Correct, they're, I mean, or they're very expansive geographically, capturing enough in the moment.
Which may or may not work to our favor. It would depend which direction, yeah, the school district boundaries, the attendance boundaries are running.
Can I ask another question? So, this also has to do with us representing different schools, and maybe it is a really good idea for us to represent different schools, but I know we've also sort of like tossed out occasionally the idea of board members sort of representing at large, really representing SFPs as a whole, which wouldn't change our board district boundaries, but might change these schools that are assigned to us. So, I don't know if that's like a conversation that we ever want to have. Um, I like the idea of representing specific schools, because it means that if there's a parent, that they can reach out to a particular board member. But, um, are there districts in, in New Mexico where the board members represent at large?
Michael?
Well, I guess there's two issues. One is just at large and general, first, in terms of school boards, and so, your single-member districts, one board member per district. There are other smaller school districts that were all five, um, are just elected at large. But if, if we're discussing, um, I guess, the schools and being assigned schools, I think this is the only district I know of that has formally put that in, in place. I, I don't know of any other school district that has the same sort of system that you guys have.
Do we have it formally in place? At large representation?
Well, on the website, I guess, on the website, yeah. I mean, it is, it is, a, sometimes it is a concern amongst school boards to, um, make sure maybe there's an equitable distribution of schools within each board member district where possible, um, but I don't know if I've seen anything like this on, on the website.
And I found myself doing some math on some of the population charts between the total population and the adult population, because I'm pretty sure that that would get us the under eighteen population in the diff, the, which is... But partly, I guess legally, that's not a consideration. I guess, my question is, do you have any thoughts or guidance about that as we look at, because there may be more deviation in our kids, in the population of children between districts.
Right. So, you could have some districts, and I can guess which ones they'd be without running those numbers, where you have a lot more kids per capita. You could keep the pop, total adult population on the low end of the five percent to account for the fact that those districts have a lot more kids, that would be an example
Yeah.
of what you can do. On the other hand, well, well, and that could be consistent, with the city of Santa Fe, where one of the considerations is, uh, when it comes to the plus or minus five percent deviation, they're considering staying on the low, negative end of the five percent deviation. deviation in the high growth areas, knowing that over the next 10 years, it's going to grow. The areas with the, without looking, I would guess the areas with the most kids are also the areas in the high growth areas. That Tierra Contenta District Four, I'm assuming the spread between total pop and adult pop is bigger. You know, it looks like it is.
It looks like districts three and five have the largest spread, largest difference.
Right.
In my mind, it kind of falls within this communities of interest umbrella, is how, how do you want that to drive what the district boundaries look like? Brian said you could try these deviations to, to maybe even out the, the child population.
Right. So really, and that, as I said, the communities of interest, what we're discussing now, should it be based on schools or kids or neighborhoods? That's your call.
Does this have the transfer students indicated?
This would simply show census population for total population and adult, and non-adult. It would not break out by transfer students. Because it's not even looking at students, it's just looking at population. You can do the math to figure out how many under 18 people there are, but we wouldn't know about the transfer student unless we integrated that with your data.
Anything else on this, now that we have numbers swimming in our heads? No. So to summarize next steps, we'll talk about our engagement and outreach plan at the next meeting. And we will, go back to that slide. I mean, you said a little bit about what board feedback you want. What more, or if any next steps in the process, would there be in that? Do you come back to a meeting with us and, once we've digested and?
Yeah, typically, and that could be a regular school board meeting where we show the plans again, get public feedback, get your feedback. Could be a joint thing. You can listen to the public first, or you can speak first and put it on the website, see what comments come in. But typically, that's what's done. Where at another meeting, we do the presentation again to the public. This is a study session, maybe we can shorten it a little, but, and then see what people think. And if you like a particular concept, but you see tweaks, you can talk to us about that, talk to staff about that. We could, you know, with the city of Santa Fe, you know, they liked Concept A, and before you know it, or actually, yeah, before you know it, you have A1, A2, and A3, and then you got B, and B, you know, tweaks to a concept. And, and then ultimately settle on a plan.
Yeah, please.
How, how much feedback do you usually get in a school district? Once people find out that it's not about changing their school boundaries?
Not much.
Okay.
We recently completed CNM, Technical Vocational Community College in Santa Fe. And we advertised the heck out of it. We had virtual meetings, we had meetings at the office, and we've just really had a hard time. City of Albuquerque, we've had, beginning to get some feedback. Sometimes when you put it on the website, and if people say, oh, that looks pretty good, and there are no controversies, then it seems to go quieter. But frankly, we haven't been getting, Michael, and the ones you've been traveling around the state?
I, I think that I have not heard one public, member of the public comment on redistricting plans during any of the board meetings, school board meetings I've been to. So I guess very little, very little public input.
We had our first meeting of the city of, we had lots of virtual meetings, city of Santa Fe. They have a commission that draws the lines for the council. And then we had our first public meeting that was well advertised at the library last week, and one person showed. So, yeah, coming out of COVID and the summer upon us, issues people at the forefront of their minds as a, wearing my poster hat of inflation, economy, and crime. It's harder right now to get much public feedback.
And the timeline of adopting a plan in August or September? Is that just a best guess? We have till December, right?
I defer to the superintendent.
Okay. And I don't know, my gut tells me we might want to take a little bit longer just because August or September is like tomorrow, and school starts and any number of things. Here's another maybe unanswerable question. But when you start going into Concept A1, A2, A3, and there are little tweaks because everybody thinks they might have a better idea. Do you have any sense of how often that improves things substantially?
Sometimes, somebody, a, a, a school board member or a citizen brings up something about their neighborhood, oh, it was split, you know, and it could be a very minor tweak. Sure, so they're appreciated, or at a minimum, they're food for thought.
I think for us, we're drawing plans not necessarily being from the community. We may know the community, but not as well as those who live here. And so any insight we have to say, well, you know, as we mentioned one of those plans, oh, that's cool, or that area between Second and St. Michael's, that makes a lot of sense to go in District Five. Maybe that's not something that we know. And so those types, that type of input is great. Whether or not it's better or worse, that, you know.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy? Confused? Feeling good? It's a lot to digest. But truly high compliments on making something pretty complex actually comprehensible. So really appreciate that.
Thank you. I, I think one thing I heard that was helpful from Member Noble, and that was maybe within the, and maybe we even get it to you, like our little notes that talk about the different, changes.
That would be very helpful.
We could send those to you as well, even though they're just broad strokes.
Yes. And even, I know it's outlined in, and I think it's there, but it did help me to hear you say sort of the foundational concepts again of each of A, B, and C. And, and that, you know, if you think about different priorities, and, and if it's working well for the community, you might go for the less change, Concept A. Yeah, and, and if the neighborhoods and, and certain things, I mean, there's some, that Airport Road consideration is sort of very large in, in my mind. Because there is a lot of work to really knit that community together and to unify it through some representation. Might be nice. Hyde Park Road, yeah, maybe fewer kids, but you know. Anyway, really appreciate just those, some of those salient nuggets of wisdom. So thank you very much for being with us, and we will see you again before this is all over.
Yes. And thank you for listening, and we got something out of the meeting as well, so we appreciate that.
All right, good stuff. We will go ahead and move on to our action items. Does anyone want to pull anything for, off of our consent agenda for consideration separately? And/or any questions on what we have here? We can take a moment to shift gears. Here's a question, is Labatt Food Service a change? Or is it our current?
Board President Noble, Board Member Superintendent, this is a RFP, RFQ for food products, commodity products. Sometimes we run them for the entire state. And other times, other districts will sponsor. And Labatt is a company that we've used in the past. They've just been selected as the preferred vendor this year.
And who are we using, who did we use this, this year?
Board President, we use multiple vendors.
Okay. Thank you.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Board Member Anderson with the motion, Secretary Bozay with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We have approved the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you, Brian, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, board discussion and possible action. Do we want to talk about our board committee representatives? Does anyone have any thoughts on this? So just to say, Item A is us, who we assign currently. Dr. Gonzalez and I are assigned to the Audit Committee. Secretary Bozay and Board Member Anderson are assigned to the CRC. Dr. Gonzalez, you're still Partners in Ed, right? Okay. And Vice President Garcia is the School Boards Association rep. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I would like to continue on the CRC.
Madam President, I would also like to continue on the CRC.
And I'm fine with my assignments.
But also to note that it's written as citizens on our agenda instead of community.
Thank you.
Excellent, got that, Community Review Committee? Okay. Well, given all that, why don't I say for the Audit Committee, the Community Review Committee, and Partners Ed, I'm going to go ahead and move that we continue with our existing appointments on those three.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Marvelous, we've approved that. And I would suggest that we wait on Number Four to hear from Vice President Garcia.
And if it does open up, I'd be open to that one.
Excellent. I think you'd be very good for that. And then Item B is the people we put on the committees. So I guess I might as well, given that I have reached out and gotten answers from two of my three representatives that they will continue. I would like to nominate Oscar Rodriguez to continue on the Audit Committee, and April Gallegos to continue on the Community Review Committee.
I will second that.
Excellent. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And does anyone else want to do appointments there? Board Member Anderson?
Thank you. I would like, I still need to talk to one of my folks, but I would like to move approval of, well, not, do I nominate?
Yeah, appointment.
Okay. Appoint Maureen Cashman and Hannah Patrick to the Community Review Committee.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any others?
I still have to check on a couple of mine. But one has agreed, Jody Wheeler, I think her name is, has agreed to stay on the Citizens' Review.
Do you want to go ahead and do that now?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and nominate Jody Wheeler for Citizens' Review Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Board Member Anderson with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good, all of them? All right, we'll keep plugging away. We've got a few. And now we'll start to build out that committee for the new year, those committees. Anything else on board discussion and possible action? Advanced planning, we have, I think, an executive session at 5:00 next week, right? Okay. So, next week, 5:00 PM, short executive session. Go ahead, Dr. Gonzalez.
Just a heads up, I won't be here on that, for that meeting.
Okay. And then we'll have a regular meeting, which will, I think we worked to clear the agenda to have substantial school safety discussion. So there'll be a big chunk of that. Thank you for that. It is certainly important to talk about right now. And then the CRC and Audit Committee meeting, and that's the end of the fiscal year.
And, and that is no longer tentative, that will take place on the 22nd of June. That's CRC.
And there, there is no meeting on the 23rd for the board? Is that right? There's no board meeting?
Correct, it's next week.
It's the 16th, yes, great. Okay. So next week is our last meeting?
Last board meeting.
Unless we need to call a special one for some reason.
Noted.
But yes, really, next week, and then until August, we have about six weeks off, so wow.
I'm going to miss you guys so much.
Right?
Can we hang out?
We'll be in touch.
Right, right.
Yeah, exactly. All right, anything else on this? Any of it? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you very much.